Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Ms. Hannah- Hannah.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr.
We have five members present. I did hear from both ladies that they were not able to come tonight. So, we will proceed. We do have a quorum. For the amendments, I have a couple of requests to amend the agenda. The first is to move Resolution Number One up to next on the agenda. And then also to add Communication Three, a letter from Mayor Williams regarding an executive session. That letter is on your desks. I put that there. So, those are the two requests that we have to amend the agenda. Mr. Clark?
Move to amend the agenda as you stated.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. I'd like to ask Deb Robinson to come up to the podium, please. As you know, I've reported out the last few months that Deb and I have been working together on the safe routes to school. And I thought maybe Deb could give us a little update before we do the rest of the business. Deb?
Well, I'm sure you've all seen the signs and the construction folks working really hard around the city to make some improvements. And it's been a long time you guys have worked really hard on passing resolutions and doing all the work that needs to be done. We're excited. I think they still have a little bit more to do. There's still some work to be done over by like where Fitworks is. But each of the school areas has a little bit of work that is being accomplished. And there's still our travel plan, as you might remember, was huge, or millions and millions of dollars. And we, our grant totals were just under $800,000. So, there's a lot of work still to do. But the first couple of stages of that work are done and are being finished. So, you'll see speed humps around Williams Avenue. You'll see some new signage around. My personal favorite is the bump out at Ameristop, which kind of lines up that corner so that it's not as scary for kids who are walking. And so, really, there are a lot of good things happening. And just know that this work was a lot of years in progress. And so, my hope is for our community to realize that when you have the opportunity to jump in and say something and be part of this solution, that's when you do it. And so, there are a lot of good things happening. And the people who spoke up early on, those are kind of the things that are being taken care of now. What questions do you have that I might answer for you?
Well, that was a bit of a ruse to get you here. So, we need a motion on the floor, if you would, to have the first reading in its entirety. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I would like to motion that we have the first reading of the resolution.
In its entirety?
In its entirety.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzo. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading in its entirety.
Resolution honoring Deb Robinson. Whereas Deb Robinson joined the Norwood City Schools 22 years ago, initially as part of the Family and Children First Initiative. And whereas Deb Robinson, a social worker by profession, has spent 22 years focused on serving students in Norwood, particularly in providing mental health support. And whereas Deb Robinson has touched the lives of hundreds of Norwood families by initiating, coordinating, and serving with such programs as the after-school program providing students enrichment activities, Norwood Ready Kids providing early childhood education opportunities, preventing injuries in Norwood, pin with Cincinnati Children's Hospital to provide safety equipment in homes with children under age five, the Center for Better Health and Nutrition with Cincinnati Children's Hospital to improve the health of Norwood's high school students, Safe Routes to School with Donna Lake to obtain nearly $800,000 worth of infrastructure improvements to increase student safety. Whereas the efforts of Deb Robinson and others led to Norwood being named among the 100 Best Communities for Children, for Young People. And whereas, to the dismay of Norwood City Council, but with best wishes, Deb Robinson has accepted a new position with Miami University. And be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio, that this resolution symbolizes the deep respect, sincere appreciation, and profound thanks that the members of council, the administration, all employees of the City of Norwood, and the citizens of Norwood have for Deb Robinson's benevolence, spirit, friendship, and tireless efforts to improve the lives of the children of Norwood.
It is my pleasure to present this to you. You have been amazing to work with, and we're just going to miss you so much. I'm really honored. I love Norwood. And, um, thank you. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
The good news is, even though she's leaving us for her job, she's still going to remain a citizen of Norwood. She's keeping her house, and she'll still be here. So, I'm sure you're going to be asked to remain on several committees. So, thank you, Deb, for everything that you've done. It's a pleasure. I'm sorry about the "why" to get you here. Okay, we do have a couple of requests to address council on agenda items, but we'll do that as they come along. So, the next is a third reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the City of Norwood, Ohio for the calendar year ending December 31, 2019, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have the third reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the third reading.
Ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the City of Norwood, Ohio for the calendar year ending December 31, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Now, move on to second reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance authorizing the mayor or safety service director to sign a letter approving assignment of community reinvestment area agreement with the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company, LLC, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I recommend we have the second reading.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second reading.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor or service safety director to sign a letter approving assignment of community reinvestment area agreement with the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company, LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, and next is an ordinance setting the salary ranges for the fire chief and chief of police. And I have Assistant Chief McCabe wants to speak on this. Would you please come forward?
I'm here to, first off, let me say that I'm not necessarily opposed to an ordinance setting the salary rate. Obviously, statutorily, you need to have either a contract or an ordinance setting this. But as this ordinance is constructed, I don't believe it's a wise move for the city to move For myself, if I was going to take the fire chief test when the current fire chief retires, I'd be taking a pay cut to start. Now, keep in mind, the fire chief's position is the only one in this city that can be held civilly liable for the job performance. I think that the benefit package being structured on the Ask Me contract, I understand the thinking on that. However, a lot of our benefits are structured towards our pension system, you know. And for us, as a fire chief or police chief, we both are in the Ohio Police and Fire Pension, whereas Ask Me is in the public employees retirement system. Two separate pension systems, two different things that we have to report to. I would like to see, now, this ordinance just appeared. I understand why. I know the report on accounting methods just came out from the Auditor of State, who actually recommended that the current police chief and fire chief contracts be extended and then renegotiated. But I think that, to do it right, this should probably be sent back to the Public Safety Committee and have open discussions regarding the format. I'm not opposed to it. I actually would appreciate having an ordinance or a contract, because the current chiefs now serve under nothing. They don't have a contract. That's problematic for somebody who has a set number of years to go forward in that position. You want to have an idea of what it is. Is it an ordinance? Fine. Contract? Fine. Doesn't matter. I can tell you right now, if this ordinance goes through, the people that are eligible for the fire chief exam within the fire department probably won't take it. And then those people below them probably won't take that. So, now you have the potential for the fire chief's position to be filled by a person who's been here for five years. That's not sound governance. That's not wise for the citizens of the city. You know, having a plan of action to provide a good service takes leadership. And I don't know that this ordinance really does the citizens any benefit. It doesn't really spell out what the city is looking for in a leader for those departments. My suggestion would be to table this ordinance, send it to a committee for open discussion between the public and the very employees that would be testing for this position. Get that input. At the end of the day, if this is what you guys decide is what's best for the city, so be it. But at least those people who are affected by it have an opportunity to have their voices heard. That's all I've got.
Can anybody have any questions or comment?
Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Chief. We now have a consideration for the second reading of the ordinance. It's your pleasure. Mr. Thompson.
I would like to suggest that we do put this in committee. I'm not sure which committee would be best, whether it be Finance, or if we need to do committee of the whole, or even Public Safety. I'm not sure what the best course would be for that. But I do, I do understand what Assistant Chief is saying, and I would like to suggest that we do that.
Do you have a preference for which committee? Is your order?
I would, I would suggest Finance.
So, your motion then is to place this ordinance into Finance Committee? Is there a second to that motion? With no second, that motion dies? Mr. Bonzo?
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I personally, I'd rather it not, well, I mean, I guess it could go to Finance. I'm just trying to think on it. I mean, do you imagine, so, the review of this, who would you want, like, would you want to get an opinion from somebody? I mean, of course.
My, my suggestion of this is not only based on what Assistant Chief has said, but I've tried to do some research on salary ranges myself, to determine if this is actually an appropriate range for this position for this area. And I haven't been able to find that data. My hope is that we can at least benchmark this range. I would love to see it benchmarked to Hamilton County, minimum, max, and median, benchmarked to the State of Ohio, min, max, median, so we know. At this point, if you told me, if somebody came to me on the street and said, "Councilman Thompson, is this the right salary range for this position?", I couldn't tell you what the salary range was. I couldn't tell you what the chief and St. Bernard makes. I cannot tell you what the City of Cincinnati chief makes. I would love for this to have been given to us with an appendix that at least explained the range. That's where my hesitation is. And it's very possible that this is a perfect range. I don't have the information to know that is the case.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We still have no motion. It is your pleasure. Try this again. Mr. Clark.
I'd like to move that this ordinance be placed in committee of the whole.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bonzo. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clark.
Reason being, I just think this, I agree with Mr. Thompson. I think this warrants discussion and really delving deeper, and I would like to have all players involved.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Thompson.
I agree with that, because as stated, we don't have current contracts or terms set for these positions. So, I believe this is important for us to get right. And as I said, this might be right. But I don't have the information that lets me confidently say that. So, that's why I think we should be doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to place this ordinance into the committee of the whole. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
No.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes.
By a vote of four to one, the motion carries, so it will be placed into the committee of the whole. We'll move on to first readings of ordinances. The first one is to consider the line item veto of the 2018 appropriations changes that we were notified of at the last meeting. The mayor had line item vetoed six items. And so, it is on council's agenda this evening for reconsideration or to override the veto. We'll take two-thirds vote, which is five votes. Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we, so, actually, before this, point of order. So, we're essentially, are we approving an ordinance here, or essentially just approving an override of?
You are, if you are going to make, if you want to put these things back into place, then you would make a motion to override the mayor's veto.
Okay, so I would make that motion to override the mayor's veto.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. So, there's a couple of issues, I guess, with the veto. The most important one is that our 2018 appropriations have to balance what the financial recovery plan says when it comes to the total amount of expenditures. And so, with some of the appropriations that were vetoed would, there were reductions in appropriations that were vetoed, but not any of the increases. So, it puts us out of balance, and it overappropriates. And it puts us at a risk that the Fiscal Recovery Commission, acting through the financial supervisors, could basically reject the entire ordinance. And it would put quite a few things out of balance at the end of the year, which would hurt us on audits and such later. So, I would recommend that we would override this veto. We've talked to the mayor about many of the concerns that he had, and essentially, most of the vetoes that were, the lines that were vetoed were items where funds weren't going to be fully used, or there was just a misunderstanding. So, I think that we should override this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Thompson.
I just have a question. Are the, are the next two ordinances related to this? They are not? Okay. They just, they were very similar, literally worded.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah. That's good.
Good clarification. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to override the mayor's veto of the six line items vetoes. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
My vote of five to nothing. The motion carries. And move on to the second, first reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2018 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have the first reading of this ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. So, with this ordinance, there's one appropriations change in Fund 97 that we really need to try to get made before the end of the year. It did not end up in the appropriations ordinance that we just overrode the vetoes in, because mistake on my part, so I apologize for that. But it does need to get done, and so the state auditors have looked at this. And so, essentially, I would recommend that we would have that first reading.
And do you want to explain what the core fund is?
Yeah, yes, thank you. So, the core fund is...
For those who may not know.
Yeah, the core fund, it's Fund 97. The increase is for an increase of $34,292. And essentially, that fund is just a pass-through fund for certain types of grants that the building department receives that have to be paid out to the people that it needs to go to. Not fully understanding why the city has to manage that, but it is what it is. It's just the normal process for how it works. So, if we would have spent less, if they would have had less grants coming in than normal, then we wouldn't have had to worry about any of this, because we appropriated the normal amount. But thankfully, there's more grants coming in for certain EPA-type work that's happening. So, we have to increase appropriations in order to pay those out.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Thompson.
You mentioned that you wanted to have this done by the end of the year. Of course, we can't have three readings tonight. Do we need two?
Sounds like new business.
I was planning on bringing that, yeah, for sure. I think that's a good idea. I do think that we should meet again to try to get this passed by the end of the year.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the first reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2018 and declaring an emergency.
Next is an ordinance amending ordinance Number 33-2009 to add clerks, permanent, part-time, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzo.
I would move that we have the first reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. So, the reason for this ordinance that I've, the reason I've been informed about this ordinance is that essentially, we have employees, or people at the city that are operating kind of in an employee fashion, but they're getting paid as a contractor. And so, there was concern that was raised by the Auditor's Office for this, and essentially, this ordinance is there to set a salary range so that we can, clerks can be funded in certain areas in the future, which they already, they already are funded through contractual services. But we can fund them through personnel services, and they can get paid, so the salary range will be there. And it'll allow the three people that are currently in those positions to continue operating, but instead of as a contractor, as a part-time employee.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to have the first reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Ordinance amending ordinance Number 33-2009 to add clerks, permanent, part-time, and declaring an emergency.
Pastor James, did I forget you? Were you going to speak on that? Can you, I apologize to you. I'm sorry. We just had the first reading, but if you could give us your name and address, and then we'll note your comments in the record. I apologize. That's my fault. Thank you.
Things happen. I'm far from perfect, so I understand. Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, Norwood, 45212. As we move forward as a community and as a city, and we make certain appropriations, I think it's, it's critical that we look at, one of the challenges that I've been trying to make for a number of years, is everything that we do, we have a number of very, very talented people in our fine community. And a lot of times, those individuals are either ignored, overlooked, or just flat-out boycotted. So, as we move forward as a community, I'm challenging this council especially to look at how we go about the things that we do. Look at how we go about selecting. And we have a number of examples of this, if you look at even how we decide who can distribute holiday items. A lot of times, nepotism is involved, where it's not based on the skill set of a person. It's not based upon their resume. It's based upon who you know, or who you know that likes you. And so, I want to challenge our city and challenge our leaders that anytime there's something going on in the community, whether it's a commission, whether it's looking at whatever it is we're going to do, please, you know, put down whatever has been of the old and step into the new. And, you know, we've had positions and jobs granted in this fine community, and there are a lot of people that are very talented, very skilled, not even looked upon, not even asked. In fact, we don't even send out a public posting of a lot of things that we have going on in our community. So, I'm asking that, as we move forward in making certain appropriations, that we consider that, and that we do open it up, and that we require everyone to make everything public. You know, just one example, my wonderful wife, who has a master's degree in forensic sciences, she can work anywhere in the state that she wants, FBI, police, whatever. But yet, when jobs become available, people like that aren't even considered. In fact, the ones that all work together continue to get those jobs, continue to be considered, and other people are just flat-out ignored. And we need to stop that going into 2019. Recently, we even had, as I closed, we even had a discussion about distributing holiday items. And my question was, well, who was the committee that decided this? And come to find out, it was already handed over to an individual that had absolutely zero experience, which has proven we've distributed food since 1997 every single month. We've distributed toys. We've done all of that, but yet, we weren't even considered. So, I want to just challenge us as a city, as we move forward. I'll leave my remaining comments during the community portion, but it's vital that we stop a lot of the old processes and really step into the new. And it's really going to be important, because we have a lot of angry people out there still that are angry at how we do things. So, God bless you all, and I'll reserve rest on the community.
It is that time. So, we have no administration reports, so it is other requests to address council. So, you're up again. You only have five minutes.
Thank you. First, let me just say to the residents of Norwood, I love this community. And as many of you know, even when others wouldn't stand with me, I have no problem standing for what I believe is right. You city council members are here because you were elected in. People trusted you. People believed you were the best that we had to offer. I don't have a problem with that. But what I do have a problem is when we boldly and arrogantly take a position. I'm a public figure, but I haven't asked anyone to vote for me yet. When we do that, we have to be held accountable. And therefore, I've been challenged before this meeting that, because of HIPAA laws, and Lord knows, I wouldn't want my wife to find me in an awkward position tonight, so I'm going to yield to that. But I am going to say, recently, there was a 911 tape revealed. And when you city council individuals go out and you do your personal stuff, I personally don't have a problem with anybody in their personal life. But once we step up and we say, "Please vote for me. I believe I'm the best this community has to offer," you are held to a higher standard. And without any communication, without any, that I know of, public apology, we cannot communicate this to the children of this community that look up to us. And therefore, I am asking for an immediate resignation of one of our city council members who I do believe love this community, who I do believe puts their neck out to help people. But one thing I used to say a long time ago about Al Capone, great guy, you go to his community, boy, people beat you up if you talk bad about him. Build hospitals, build schools, build orphanages. He just had one bad habit. He killed people for a living, or had them killed. So I know good people can do, make mistakes. But when you represent my community, and you represent the people that I know, that I love and serve, you owe them a bit more. So not just a council person that would go out and on 911 tape clearly say, "Norwood, 911. How may I help you?" I brought my friend home from the bar. You're a public fig, you're public figures. And I'm scared. I don't know what to do. He's incoherent. When that happens, you should be held accountable, whatever the excuses are. And I'm not saying that reconciliation can't happen down the road. But for this individual, I am asking for full resignation, not of just the individual, not just of that council member, but of anyone else in leadership in this community that has known about it, participated in not bringing this to the surface, that the voting public have a right to at least give their opinion on. I think that's foul, and I don't think that's in the best interest of Norwood. And I will not back down on this. I will check into the HIPAA laws on this. I did come prepared with that 911 tape. If anyone has any questions concerned, and I don't care what office they hold, from the top down, if you've known of this incident and you've kept your mouth quiet, you need to go take a seat and let other individuals step up. We have other fine individuals in our community. They don't even know I would use their name. But Cindy Tench, Joe Faust, Lynn Ellis, even Mr. Snyder, we have individuals ready that are qualified. How can we trust you to represent us as a community when you cannot even control yourself? It is way out of order and over the top. So I'm asking for a full resignation, along with a game plan of reconciliation, should it be their desire to continue to serve this fine community, and a full explanation and an apology immediately. And then to leave your family at home, to go and party?
Pastor James, can you wrap your five minutes? You're almost up.
I'm asking the community of Norwood, you don't have to stand behind me. It's proof that I'll stand by myself. But this isn't going away, because I'm not. Full resignation and a reconciliation plan, as well as all of those from the top down that have known about this and have done nothing about it. And I'm not going to stop until every stone is unturned on this.
Thank you, Pastor James.
Merry Christmas.
As we will move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. So as the council member Thompson had alluded to, we've got two, well, there's two ordinances, really, that we've had the first reading of. The ordinance to change appropriations and the ordinance amending 33-2009 to add the clerks. Those of those, the city would benefit from having those passed before the end of the year. I would recommend that we try to have at least one special meeting next week, and potentially one on the 31st. Or we could have two next week, if people are available.
Is everybody going to be in town between Christmas and New Year's? You are not?
I'm going to be here.
I am too. I'm not going anywhere. I know Ms. Stevenson is out of town, though, I think between those two holidays. And I don't remember if Mrs. Hanahan said she might be gone. I don't remember.
What was the date? Did we have a date?
Well, it could be Wednesday. It could be the Wednesday.
We could do Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, I guess.
Wednesday would be best for me, I have people in town. If at all possible. I could do any day.
With your pleasure. Mr. Sancker?
I was going to say, if people are off, I mean, we could even, I don't know who all is working and who's not, but we could even do it during the day.
Yeah.
If that would help anybody.
Who can't be, I know Eric can't do it. Mr. Thompson can't do it during the day. You probably can either, Mr. Clark.
No.
Is six o'clock a good time for people? Just get it over with quickly?
Yeah, I think it'll be a relatively quick meeting.
Yeah. If it's quick, I could do any night.
Do you want to do them both next week, or do you want to do one next week and one on the 31st? City Hall will be closed, but we can get in.
I'm likely going to be gone 31st.
Okay, so probably two special meetings next week.
Either two special or...
I mean, I don't imagine that they'll last long.
Yeah, we could just schedule Wednesday and Thursday and...
Okay. Is Wednesday and Thursday okay, the 26th and 27th?
Yeah.
At six o'clock?
Yeah.
Mr. Sancker?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the purpose of the special meeting then is to, do you want to add the third reading of the other ordinances, or just leave them? Nah. You just want to do the two ordinances, the ordinance?
No, I would say let's just add them. And, well, we only need the third reading of J1.
Do we need to finish out?
You don't need the urology group? Or do we want to add that one on, the third reading for the urology group?
I would add it on. Let's just not...
Okay.
Yep.
And then the salary ranges is in Committee of the Whole. So then it would be the ordinance to change appropriations for 2018, and then...
I would say the resolution for Deb Robison. We could probably do the second and third.
And what about the clerks permanent and part-time?
I would add that to the...
Okay. All right. So my understanding then is...
Everything we need to...
Let me know if I'm wrong, that we will have a special meeting on both Wednesday, December 26th, and Thursday, December 27th, at 6:00 PM, for the purpose of considering the ordinance approving assignment of the urology group, the change in appropriations for 2018, the ordinance amending ordinance about to add clerks permanent part-time, and the resolution honoring Deb Robison. That's correct? Mr. Thompson?
Do we need to do the line item veto?
We took care of that tonight.
Oh, that was just a one-off?
Yeah, that's all you have to do, is just one vote.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. That's a good question. That's the first time we've done that in the last few years, so we don't have a great history of how to override vetoes. Thankfully, we haven't had to do that too much. Okay. So, and we will, I will call those two special meetings, and you'll take care of notifying the Sunshine people. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? We'll move on to communications then. The first is from the Ohio Liquor Control regarding Bravo Brio. This is just a change in stock, is that correct? Just a, it's a percentage change, so from Alton Duty and Bravo Development to just First View Global Holdings. So it looks like they will hold 100% of the share, so has gone out to all of the departments?
I believe so.
Okay. So responses must be postmarked by January 30th. I'm sorry, January 3rd. Mr. Sancker?
I'd recommend that the letter be received and filed, and that the change be approved as stated in the letter here.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Bonzel? Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding appointment to the Norwood Civil Service Commission.
To Dolores Rectors, dear Ms. Rectors, this letter will confirm your appointment to the Norwood Civil Service Commission effective December 14th, 2018. Your term will expire on December 31st, 2024. Thank you for accepting this position, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? I think this opening was due to Susan Gessbrock moving out of town, so created an opening. Motion on the floor then is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding executive session.
Dear Madam President and members of council, I write to ask that council consider holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations, or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark? I'm sorry, Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I move that the letter be received and filed.
And we'll just place this on the January 22nd agenda.
Perfect.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Brayden? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have two absent members. Mr. Thompson?
Actually, I missed something under new business. Is it all right if I?
Sure, let's do it. What the heck?
We lost a member of our community this past week, Lisa Tanner, who was a teacher and taught several of my kids. And I know she's been very active in our community, and I just wondered if we could